Congratulations to the United States of America. Considerable citizens, one nation, and one God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you all for coming tonight. Marla, could you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Nicholson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanders?
Here.
Councilmember Gertz? Espinoza?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wells?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. The first item is the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions in regards to that motion? If not, Marla will do open online voting and verbal voting.
All of you say yes. Marla?
Okay.
Can I say yes?
Okay.
All of you say yes.
Okay. Anything, if you're done. Online voting is closed along with verbal voting. And the motion carries with seven days.
Okay. Now we'll move on down to the new business. Item A, all health matters related to the COVID-19 updates, discussion, and proposed resolutions. Also, woman Wells?
I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution of the governing body of the City of Rawlins, Carbon County, Wyoming, adopting and supporting the statewide public health order closing bars, restaurants, food courts, theaters, gymnasiums, childcare facilities, K-12 schools, colleges, universities, and trade schools statewide in adopting emergency changes to the City of Rawlins' personnel policy to appropriately respond to the needs of their employees as a result of the COVID-19 closures and counting the public closure of all City of Rawlins buildings and structures while continuing to meet the current demand for essential services within the City of Rawlins, including adoption of the Rawlins Police Department response protocols. Whereas, in an effort to stop the spread of coronavirus COVID-19, the Wyoming Department of Health finds it necessary to protect the health of the public by implementing emergency measures to close all of restaurants, bars, theaters, gymnasiums, childcare facilities, K-12 schools, colleges, universities, and trade schools in the state of Wyoming with certain exceptions. The order was effective immediately and shall remain in effect until April 3, 2020. And whereas, Wyoming State Statute 351240A, the Department of Health through the state health officer or under their direction and supervision through the other employees of the department shall have and exercise the following powers and duties: to exercise in Wyoming all the rights and powers and perform all duties hereunder to investigate and control the causes of epidemic/endemic, communicable, occupational, and other diseases and afflictions, and physical disabilities resulting therefrom affecting the public health; to establish, maintain, and force isolation and quarantine and pursuance thereof, and for such purpose only, to exercise such physical control over property and over the persons of the people within the state as the state health officer may find necessary for the protection of the public health; to close theaters, schools, and other public places, and to forbid gatherings of people where necessary to protect the public health; to evade nuisances when necessary for the protection of the public health; to enforce such sanitary standards for the protection of public health; to make, approve, and require standard diagnostic tests, and to prepare, distribute, and require the completion of forms or certificates with respect thereto; disseminate public health information during a health emergency defined by Wyoming State Statute 354115AI. The state health officer may prescribe pharmaceutical and therapeutic interventions en masse as necessary to protect the public health. And whereas, the Wyoming Department of Health has made the following findings: COVID-19 was first detected in Wuhan, China in 2019, and since then has spread to over 30 countries, including the United States. There are currently 19 confirmed -- this actually changed, but 19 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Wyoming as of March 2020. As well as the presence of community spread, it is expected that more cases will be diagnosed. COVID-19 is a respiratory illness transmitted through person-to-person contact or by contact with surfaces contaminated with the virus. Persons infected with COVID-19 may become symptomatic two to 14 days after exposure. The symptoms of COVID-19 can result in severe disease, including hospitalization, admission to an intensive care unit, and death, especially among older adults and persons with serious underlying health conditions. The World Health Organization declared COVID-19 a worldwide pandemic as of March 11, 2020. On March 13, 2020, the President of the United States declared a national emergency concerning the coronavirus, specifically stating that in December 2019, a novel new coronavirus such as SARS-CoV-2, the virus, was first detected in Wuhan, Uyby Province, People's Republic of China, causing outbreaks of the coronavirus disease, COVID-19, that has now spread globally. The spread of COVID-19 within the nation's communities threatens to strain our nation's healthcare systems. Additional measures are needed to successfully contain and combat the virus in the United States. On March 13, 2020, Wyoming Governor Mark Gordon declared a state of emergency, a public health emergency, in the state of Wyoming, stating that on March 11, 2020, an individual within the state of Wyoming tested presumptive positive for COVID-19, and the state of Wyoming is experiencing a public health emergency in response to the evolving COVID outbreak. Governor Gordon's declaration of a state of emergency, a public health emergency directs the Wyoming Department of Health to take all appropriate and necessary actions, and that in the judgment of the Director of the Wyoming Department of Health. Any actions necessary should be taken to provide aid to those locations where there is a threat of danger to public health, safety, and welfare. The guidelines issued from the White House on March 16, 2020, specifically that with evidence of community transmission within a state, bars, restaurants, food courts, gymnasiums, and other indoor and outdoor venues where groups of people congregate should be closed. A significant number of Wyoming citizens are at risk of serious health complications, including death from COVID-19. Although most individuals who contract COVID-19 do not become seriously ill, people with mild symptoms and even asymptomatic persons with COVID-19 place other vulnerable members of the public at significant risk. Counties in Wyoming have requested orders of this kind following the White House guidelines, and the best manner for protecting the health of citizens of Wyoming is through the consistent order spanning the entire state. A large number of persons with serious infections has the ability to compromise the ability of healthcare systems in Wyoming to deliver the necessary healthcare to the public. Wyoming State Statute 351240A and IV provides all the rights and powers for the Wyoming Department of Health through the state health officer, Dr. Alexis Harris, M.D., Ph.D., are under her directive through other employees of the Wyoming Health Department: to close bars, restaurants, food courts, theaters, gymnasiums, childcare facilities, K-12 schools, colleges, universities, and other places, and forbid public gatherings when necessary to protect the public health. In addition to the above findings, stopping the spread of COVID-19 includes washing hands often, practice social distancing by avoiding close contact with others, staying at least six feet away from someone who is ill or showing signs of illness, avoiding touching your face, eyes, nose, and mouth, and covering your cough or sneeze into your elbow or by using a tissue. And whereas, the Wyoming Department of Health has issued the following orders: the following places of public accommodation --
Hold on. Else for a minute? Can I update you?
You're gonna make me read it again?
Go.
Okay. Perfect.
Little update there. Go ahead.
The following places of public accommodation are ordered close to ingress, egress, use and occupancy by members of the public: restaurants, food courts, cafes, coffeehouses, or other similar places of public accommodation offering food or beverage of on-premises consumption: bars, hamlets, breweries, breweries, microbreweries, distilleries, wineries, tasting rooms, special licenseed clubs, and other places of public accommodation offering alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption: cigar bars, gymnasiums, and movie and performance theaters, opera houses, concert halls, and music halls. The following conditions apply to places of public accommodation subject to this order: places of public accommodation where are encouraged to offer food and beverage using delivery service, window service, lockup service, drive-through service, or drive-up service, and to use precautions in doing so to mitigate the potential transmission of COVID-19, including social distancing. Online and telephonic credit card transactions are strongly incurred, e.g., Venmo, Square Cash, Google Pay, Apple Pay, and similar payment apps. Staff who handle cash or credit cards may not be involved in the preparation, handling, or delivery of food. In offering food or beverage, a place of public accommodation may permit up to five members of the public at one time in the place of public accommodation for a purpose of picking up their food and beverage orders, so long as the individuals are at least six feet apart from one another while on the premises. For hotel, restaurants, food items may only be delivered as room service or as described. Management shall ensure on a daily basis that no employee who presents symptoms of illness will be permitted to work. For clarity, this order does not apply to any of the following: places of public accommodation that offer food and beverages not for on-premises consumption, including grocery stores, markets, retail stores that offer food convenience stores, pharmacies, drugstores, and food pantries; room service in hotels; healthcare facilities, residential care facilities, congregate care facilities, and juvenile justice facilities; crisis shelters or similar institutions; airport concessionaires; and emergency facilities for the response of the events surrounding the public health emergency and state of emergency caused by COVID-19. All childcare centers and home care daycares are ordered closed subject to the following: childcare centers or home care daycares that provide care of children of essential personnel may continue to operate to provide childcare for children of essential personnel. A list of essential personnel who may be served by childcare facilities includes staff and providers of childcare and education services, including custodial kitchen staff and other support staff who do not do their work remotely. Providers of healthcare, including but not limited to: employees of clinics, hospitals, nursing homes, long-term care, and post-acute care facilities; respite houses, designated agencies; emergency medical services, as well as custodial kitchen, administrative, and other support staff; criminal justice personnel, including those in law enforcement, courts, and correctional services; public health employees; firefighters; Wyoming National Guard; personnel called to duty for responding to COVID, and other first responders; state employees determined to be essential for the response of COVID-19 crisis; active-duty military staff; pharmacy; foster families with children through grades eight, 211, 211, and 911; call center staff; critical infrastructure and utility workers, including electrical, plumbing, telecommunications; water and wastewater operators, workers, and staff; state, municipal, and commercial public works and sanitation crews; grocery and food supply workers; supply chain; postal and delivery drivers; and warehouse workers; manufacturers of medical devices; equipment testing, equipment, and supplies; fuel distribution workers. In circumstances where a childcare center or home daycare remains open, the center or home is required to have fewer than 10 people in a room or together at any time, including meals or recreation. Further, a childcare center or home daycare that remains open is required to follow all healthcare guidelines from the CDC and Wyoming Department of Health for eliminating the risk of transmission for COVID-19 to the extent possible when caring for children. As childcare is a critical part of the infrastructure of Wyoming, allowing central systems to function in the event a county health officer wants to close a childcare facility under the direction and supervision of the state health officer, the county health officer shall work with local childcare providers to make available limited childcare services for essential personnel as described above. All K-12 schools shall dismiss students until no sooner than April 3, 2020, to the extent any school in Wyoming has not already done so. Administrative staff and teachers may continue to work in school buildings to facilitate distance learning or to complete administrative tasks. Food may still be prepared to be made available to those in need as directed by the school's superintendents. Classes may still be offered online at the discretion of the school. All college, universities, and trade schools shall not hold in-person classes no sooner than April 3, 2020. Administrative staff and teachers may continue to work in facility buildings to facilitate distance learning or to complete administrative tasks. Food may still be prepared to be made to those in need. Classes may still be offered online at the discretion of the college or university or trade school. This order supersedes all previous individual county orders authorized by the Wyoming State Health Officer under Wyoming State Statute 351240A IV. To the extent the county order is more restrictive, the more restrictive provisions still apply. Exceptions to the public accommodations set above, paragraphs one through three, may be granted at the discretion of the county health officer under the direction and supervision of the state health officer. If the business can demonstrate in writing to the county health officer that they will limit customers within business to no more than 10 at any given time, that at least six feet of space will be maintained between customers at all time, and that effective cleaning will be performed between customers. The state health officer has deemed this order necessary to protect the public health and will reassess the necessity of this order as appropriate to do so and according to accepted epidemiological and medical standards. Any person or legal entity that violates this order shall be subject to criminal prosecution. And whereas, this unprecedented time, the City of Rawlins governing body and interim city manager desire to be leaders in this historic response to help reduce the exposure of its citizens to COVID-19 by practicing the orders herein above, announced by continuing the authority for remote access meetings pursuant to Rawlins Municipal Code, Section 204020, and hereby eliminating the physical quorum requirements for each meeting of the Rawlins City Council. And whereas, this unprecedented time, the City of Rawlins governing body and interim city manager will continue in its proactive efforts to limit public exposure, will continue the order closing all City of Rawlins buildings and structures to the public with the caveat that the public may at any time call the requested city department for assistance and seek an appointment for all matters which cannot be addressed by phone. All public appointments shall be strictly limited to 10 or less staff and public in the same room, subjecting to screening procedures by RFD/EMT personnel, with all individuals suffering from any type of symptom being asked to remain at home. Moreover, if you are experiencing an emergency, please do not hesitate to call 911. And whereas, during this unprecedented time, the City of Rawlins governing body and interim city manager intend to honor the Wyoming Public Meetings Act, as codified in Wyoming State Statute 164401, 164408, with the intent to conduct public business while attempting to reduce the potential of exposure community-wide, will continue to broadcast its meetings on Facebook Live and pursuant to the Wyoming State Statute 164403. Will ensure that the public has the ability to hear, read, or otherwise discern the meeting discussion contemporaneously, and may pose questions of public concern to the City of Rawlins Facebook Live feed, but these actions are intended only during this unprecedented time. All time restrictions shall remain in full force and effect. And whereas, during this unprecedented time, the City of Rawlins governing body and the interim city manager are supporting of amending the Rawlins Employee Personnel Policy to ensure our employees are afforded the ability to remain home as affected as stated. For employees who may be unable to work in order to stay home for school-aged children due to COVID-19 due to school closures, employees are permitted to utilize compensation and vacation time. Use of accrued sick leave shall be taken pursuant to the Rawlins Employee Personnel Policy, Section 4.2B, 1, 2, and 3, with medical verification required from a medical care provider that the employee has been released to return to duty. All probationary employees on the probationary status are hereby granted leave to use their accrued sick leave and/or vacation time if the absence is related to COVID-19 during the national emergency of COVID-19. Employees may be allowed to request an extension of vacation and/or sick leave hours with all the accrued compensation times. Taken vacation leave shall be exhausted before the extension will be granted. However, once the emergency has been lifted and your leave hours are in the negative, you shall be required to bring those hours back to a positive balance prior to the use of additional hours. If there's a formal separation between the city and the employee, those negative hours shall be reduced from their final check. And whereas, the Rawlins Police Department, in their efforts to answer the call for law enforcement services in our community while trying to limit and/or reduce the potential exposure of COVID-19 to our officers, are instituting the following dispatch and officer response protocols. The Rawlins Police Department has taken steps to ensure the health and safety of our employees as well as the citizens of Rawlins during the pandemic coronavirus crisis. The following steps we have taken to ensure our safety to the public and personnel. All patrol officers are being medically cleared for duty at the beginning of their shifts by being evaluated by medical personnel at Memorial Hospital of Carbon County. Once they are medically cleared, they are given a wristband which notifies other emergency personnel that they have been medically cleared for duty. This medical clearance is effective for up to 24 hours unless they begin experiencing symptoms. If an officer is sick, they are to stay home until they are medically released by a medical doctor to return to work. The following information are the protocols the police department will take when we receive a call for service through our dispatch center. When a dispatcher receives a call that is not emergent in nature, we will ask if the reporting party can be assisted via telephone response rather than an in-person response. If they indicate a favorable response, an officer will initiate a return call to them and determine if they need to follow up in person. On all non-emergent calls that they request officer in-person contact, please ask them if they would be willing to meet the officer outside of the building or structure. If the answer is no, dispatch will ask the caller the following questions: Do you have a fever, cough, or shortness of breath? Have you traveled outside of Wyoming Carbon County in the last 14 days? Have you had any contact with someone who has traveled recently or has been diagnosed with the flu? If the answer to any of these questions is yes, dispatch will notify the responding officer to ensure they are taking proper cautions for each given call for services. They will make the determination of PPE to be used. If the answer is no, dispatch the call using the normal call procedure. When an emergent call is received, please ask the questions if you can safely and without causing a delay in response or getting information to the officers. If the answer to any of the questions is yes, please inform officers over the radio that it is a code-M call. They will then know to use PPE on entry. Now, therefore, be resolved by the governing body of the City of Rawlins, Carbon County, Wyoming, by this resolution, adopts and supports the statewide public health order closing bars, restaurants, food courts, theaters, gymnasiums, gymnasiums. statewide public health order closing bars, restaurants, food courts, theaters, gymnasiums, childcare facilities, K-12 schools, colleges, universities, and trade schools statewide, and adopting emergency changes to the City of Rawlins personnel policy to appropriately respond to the needs of their employees as a result of COVID-19 closures, and continuing the public closure of all City of Rawlins buildings and structures while continuing to meet the current demands for essential services within the City of Rawlins, including adoption of the Rawlins Police Department response protocols through April 3, 2020, unless additional orders are issued which extend the need for these or alternative measures, in which case the resolution shall continue with no additional action required by the governing body of the City of Rawlins, so long as they are in conformance with a properly issued order of the State of Wyoming with authority and jurisdiction vested. Asked, approved, and adopted this twentieth day of March 2020.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wells. We have a second, perhaps?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion in all that resolution that Councilwoman Wells has just read?
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Would they be able to put that number, 211, and the 911 number on there?
It was.
It was on there.
Yeah, it was in there when she read that.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor? Does that also include the landfill? I suppose that it does.
The landfill will be open.
It will be open.
That is my understanding correct?
So we are taking protocols out there as well. We're having the landfill staff, correct me if I'm wrong, they were. They're actually stepping outside the shack to deliver the tickets and all of that stuff, to keep open air and space, eliminate the travel inside the building to avoid the charge getting in there and pulp baiting in there. So they are taking protocols out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin.
Any other questions?
Marla, would you open the online vote, please? Hanson, brother?
Yes.
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yeas.
All right, thank you, Marla. The motion passed, and I just want to thank the City of Rawlins for supporting us on this. It's very important on these times that we all try to follow these guidelines so we can get past this in a timely manner and move on with life. Thank you, guys. Edie, in the end.
So moved.
Someone with multiple-page scripts and files every day?
I don't know if they're going to be distributed.
We got read like twenty times, so that's fine.
I thought you gave it to her, and I thought she got three, one, and then tried the other one.
I thought you were just gonna read the heading.